Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Happy New Year. Welcome to the annual reorganization meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Today is January 2nd, 2024, and I am Dave Berman. I'm the Township Manager, and I'll be chairing this meeting very briefly. First item of business is the roll call. Commissioner Gondak.
President.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner-elect McCollum.
Here.
Chief Iola, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible)
So for the meeting this evening, we'll have the Oaths of Office for the elected, the newly-elected Commissioners and for the re-elected Commissioners. Then we'll have the nomination of President and Vice President, and then we'll take a recess after that so that photos and we can move some things around. Judge Mancini-Duer is here to administer the Oaths of Office, and I'll step forward to get you all set up.
We'll start with, we'll start with first word Commissioner Brian Gondak.
And if your family's here, please come forward.
(Inaudible)
Yes, I can.
I, Brian Gondak, Esquire.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner, Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of Haverford Township Township Commissioner with fidelity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And third word Commissioner Kevin McCloskey. And if your family would like to come forward, please do.
Oh, they'll do right against the podium if you could. Thank you.
Is that good, then?
Could you hold it for your dad?
I, Kevin McCloskey, Esquire.
I, Kevin McCloskey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
And I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
(Applause)
And could we have fifth word Commissioner Laura Cavender? And if your family would like to join you up front, please do.
Do you want to hold the microphone for your mommy? Or do you want to hold her hand? Hold it up, hold it up. Hold it up here. No, you can't. It's just for me to do it here. I don't need it. All right. I, Laura Cavender.
I, Laura Cavender.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner, Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of Haverford Township Township Commissioner with fidelity.
Thank you.
And could we have fifth word Commissioner Laura Cavender?
And if your family would like to come forward, please do.
Do you want to hold the microphone for your mommy? Or do you want to hold her hand? Hold it up, hold it up. Hold it up here. No, you can't. It's just for me to do it here. I don't need it. All right. I, Laura Cavender.
I, Laura Cavender.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
That I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Ready?
Right this way. One, two.
Mine's going to be long.
Seventh word Commissioner Connor Quinn, please come forward. And if your family's here, please join us.
(Inaudible)
Do you want to hold the microphone for your mommy? Or do you want to hold her hand? Hold it up, hold it up. Hold it up here. No, you can't. It's just for me to do it here. I don't need it. All right. I, Laura Cavender.
I, Laura Cavender.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge, discharge, discharge the duties.
Of Township Commissioner.
Of Township Comis- Comit- Or Comit- Commissioner.
Haverford Township.
Or Haverford Town- Township.
Delaware County.
Del- Well, Delaware Count- Count- County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
(Applause)
And let's welcome ninth word Commissioner-elect Mike McCollum. Is your, is your family here? Where, where's everybody? Does anybody want to come forward?
(Inaudible)
Okay. So, please hold the microphone. Can you hold the microphone? And... Is it McCollum?
McCollum.
I, Michael McCollum.
I, Michael McCollum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
And I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
(Applause)
And let's welcome ninth word Commissioner-elect Mike McCollum. Is your, is your family here? Where, where's everybody? Does anybody want to come forward?
(Inaudible)
Okay. So, please hold the microphone. Can you hold the microphone? And... Is it McCollum?
McCollum.
I, Michael McCollum.
I, Michael McCollum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
And I will discharge the duties of Township Commissioner.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Haverford Township, Delaware County, with fidelity.
Try not to get the podium in these scriptures. One, two, three, one more.
Oh, thank you. Judge Duer, thank you for coming out this evening.
You're welcome.
So we'll now accept nominations from the Commissioners for President of the Board of Commissioners for calendar year 2024.
I nominate Larry Holmes.
And I'll second.
We have a nomination in a second. Is there a motion to close nominations?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Or I second?
All in favor to close nominations?
Aye.
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 So we'll take the roll. Commissioner Gondak.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Holmes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Holmes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Larry Holmes.
Thank you. Congratulations. For anybody old enough to remember the Brady Bunch, if anybody remembers Greg got the job as Johnny Bravo because he fit the suit, and I feel like I got the job tonight because I happened to be in the center chair. But I do want to thank all of my colleagues for an opportunity again to lead this extraordinary board, and my first official act will be to accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Judy Trombetta.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Could I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Okay, we have a motion, and I need a second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we will call the roll for the nomination of Judy Trombetta for Vice President of the Board, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Cavender.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner McCollum.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Holmes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Did we still want to do pictures? If there, yeah, we've got to move computers and things like that, so this would actually be a good time for anybody else who wanted to take any other photographs. So let's take a five-minute break while we do this. Okay, we are now back on the record. Thank you all for that break. The next item on our agenda are administrative appointments. Our first administrative appointment for consideration is Township Solicitor. We will consider a motion to appoint or reappoint an attorney as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2024.
I nominate John Walco as Solicitor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations for Township Solicitor?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are closed. For your consideration now is the motion to reappoint John Walco as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I nominate John Walco as Solicitor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations for Township Solicitor?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are closed. For your consideration now is the motion to reappoint John Walco as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I nominate Kaylee Melchior, who is John's partner, and has, has functioned quite ably as our Township Solicitor at times when John is not here. Welcome back, Kaylee, and a Happy New Year. The next thing for us to consider is, is the, for us to entertain, the Township Manager's recommended appointment as of our Township Engineer for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Mr. Berman, I hand the floor over to you for us to, for us to hear your suggested appointment.
Commissioners, I recommend Panoni Associates.
Colleagues, we have a motion. I need a motion to confirm Mr. Berman's...
To confirm it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Larry Holmes. Commissioner Quinn.
Holmes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Holmes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Larry Holmes.
Thank you. Congratulations. For anybody old enough to remember the Brady Bunch, if anybody remembers Greg got the job as Johnny Bravo because he fit the suit, and I feel like I got the job tonight because I happened to be in the center chair. But I do want to thank all of my colleagues for an opportunity again to lead this extraordinary board, and my first official act will be to accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Judy Trombetta.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Could I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Okay, we have a motion, and I need a second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of closing?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are closed. For your consideration now is the motion to reappoint John Walco as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
John Walco.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
John Walco.
Commissioner McCloskey.
John Walco.
Commissioner Cavender.
John Walco.
Commissioner Quinn.
John Walco.
Commissioner Hart.
John Walco.
Commissioner McCollum.
John Walco.
Commissioner Trombetta.
John Walco.
Commissioner Holmes.
Attorney Walco. And with us this evening will be Kaylee Melchior, who is John's partner, and has, has functioned quite ably as our Township Solicitor at times when John is not here. Welcome back, Kaylee, and a Happy New Year. The next thing for us to consider is, is the, for us to entertain, the Township Manager's recommended appointment as of our Township Engineer for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Mr. Berman, I hand the floor over to you for us to, for us to hear your suggested appointment.
Commissioners, I recommend Panoni Associates.
Colleagues, we have a motion. I need a motion to confirm Mr. Berman's...
To confirm it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Larry Holmes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner McCollum.
Judy Trombetta.
Commissioner Holmes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Did we still want to do pictures? If there, yeah, we've got to move computers and things like that, so this would actually be a good time for anybody else who wanted to take any other photographs. So let's take a five-minute break while we do this. Okay, we are now back on the record. Thank you all for that break. The next item on our agenda are administrative appointments. Our first administrative appointment for consideration is Township Solicitor. We will consider a motion to appoint or reappoint an attorney as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2024.
I nominate John Walco as Solicitor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations for Township Solicitor?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are closed. For your consideration now is the motion to reappoint John Walco as our Township Solicitor for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
John Walco.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
John Walco.
Commissioner McCloskey.
John Walco.
Commissioner Cavender.
John Walco.
Commissioner Quinn.
John Walco.
Commissioner Hart.
John Walco.
Commissioner McCollum.
John Walco.
Commissioner Trombetta.
John Walco.
Commissioner Holmes.
Attorney Walco. And with us this evening will be Kaylee Melchior, who is John's partner, and has, has functioned quite ably as our Township Solicitor at times when John is not here. Welcome back, Kaylee, and a Happy New Year. The next thing for us to consider is, is the, for us to entertain, the Township Manager's recommended appointment as of our Township Engineer for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Mr. Berman, I hand the floor over to you for us to, for us to hear your suggested appointment.
Commissioners, I recommend Panoni Associates.
Colleagues, we have a motion. I need a motion to confirm Mr. Berman's...
To confirm it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
It's good to have you back again. Next for our consideration, Resolution Number 2352 of 2024. This is Resolution Appointing our Boards and Commissions, the vacancies that occur on all of them. Before we do each individual appointment, we need to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2352, 2024, appointing the following Boards and Commissions.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The first appointment for our consideration is the Zoning Hearing Board. This is a five-year term. To appoint or reappoint someone to serve on the Zoning Hearing Board, this term will expire on December 31st, 2028.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Julia Kresnicki to serve on the Zoning Hearing Board for a five-year term to expire on December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
Motion to appoint Jessica Vitale to the Zoning Hearing Board.
I'll second.
We have a second nomination. Do we have a motion to, do we have any other nomination?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the nominations are closed. For our consideration is the appointment to the Zoning Board of Julia Kresnicki or the reappointment of Jessica Vitale. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Jessica Vitale.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Julia Kresnicki.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Ms. Vitale.
Commissioner Cavender.
Julia Kresnicki.
Commissioner Quinn.
Jessica Vitale.
Commissioner Hart.
Jessica Vitale.
Commissioner McCollum.
Jessica Vitale.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Jessica Vitale.
Commissioner Holmes.
Jessica Vitale. Thank you, Ms. Vitale, for your previous service and for your future service on this board. And Ms. Kresnicki, thank you for your candidacy. Moving to the Vacancy Committee, one-year term. I believe this remains an open position, and...
Table.
I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second. All in favor of tabling the Vacancy Committee?
Aye.
Sorry, yeah, Vacancy Committee. Any opposed? The appointment for the Vacancy Committee is tabled until next Monday. Vacancy, Vacant Property Review Committee, a five-year term. Will entertain a motion on this?
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table and a second. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Our appointment for the Vacant Property Review Committee for a five-year term is tabled until next Monday. Our next consideration is the Radnor Haverford Marple Sewer Authority. This is a five-year term. Will entertain a motion to appoint or reappoint someone to serve on the RHM Sewer Authority for a term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Michael Stevens. Reappoint Michael Stevens.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other nominations for the RHM?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close. We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Nominations are closed. For our consideration is the reappointment of Mike Stevens to serve on the RHM Sewer Authority. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Mike Stevens.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Mike Stevens.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Mr. Stevens.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mike Stevens.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Stevens.
Commissioner McCollum.
Mike Stevens.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mike Stevens.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Stevens, thank you, Mr. Stevens, for your service and for continuing to serve. For our next consideration is the Shade Tree Commission. We have three positions that are open in the Shade Tree Commission. We will appoint these one person at a time. So our first motion is for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026. This is, yes, a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026. I will entertain a motion. Mr. Stevens, thank you, Stevens, for your service and for continuing to serve. For our next consideration is the Shade Tree Commission. We have three positions that are open in the Shade Tree Commission. We will appoint these one person at a time. So our first motion is for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2026. This is, yes, a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2026. So we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, a motion to appoint Edmund Krasnicki to the Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for this position?
Motion to close.
Second.
Have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are closed on this appointment. For our consideration is the appointment of Edmund Krasnicki to the Shade Tree Commission. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondick.
Edward Krasnicki, I apologize.
Well, you sound like me there.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Krasnicki.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Krasnicki.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Krasnicki.
Commissioner McCollum.
Edmund Krasnicki.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Edmund Krasnicki.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Krasnicki, thank you, Mr. Krasnicki. We now have a second appointment for the Shade Tree Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2026. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint James Stevens to Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nomination for the second position?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have a nomination of James Stevens for the Shade Tree Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2026. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
All right, James Stevens.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Stevens.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Stevens.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Stevens.
Commissioner McCollum.
James Stevens.
Commissioner Trombetta.
James Stevens.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Stevens, we have a third position on the Shade Tree Commission, a term to expire on December 31, 2026. I will, we will consider a motion.
Motion to appoint Mr. Panou Kalagoropoulos.
Good luck with that.
Kalagoropoulos.
There you go.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for Mr. Kalagoropoulos. Do we have any other nominations for this position?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? The nomination before us is to appoint Panou Kalagoropoulos to the three-year term for the Shade Tree Commission for a three-year term to expire 12/31/2026. Mr. Berman, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gondick.
Panou Kalagoropoulos.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Panou Kalagoropoulos.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Kalagoropoulos.
Commissioner McCollum.
Panou Kalagoropoulos.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. I've said it enough times. Thank you, all three candidates, for your service to the township. Next, for our consideration, is a position on the Parks and Recreation Board. This is a five-year term. This term will expire on December 31, 2028.
You skipped planning.
Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Next for our consideration is Planning Commission. These are two separate positions. On the Planning Commission, four-year terms to expire on December 31, 2027. We will consider a motion for the first position.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Maggie Dobbs to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will now consider Maggie Dobbs for the position of reappointment to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Maggie Dobbs.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Maggie Dobbs.
Commissioner Holmes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Commissioner Hart. Maggie Dobbs.
Commissioner McCollum.
Maggie Dobbs.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Maggie Dobbs.
Commissioner Holmes.
Ms. Dobbs, thank you. Our next, for consideration, is the Park and Recreation Board. Parks and Recreation.
Park and Planning Commission. I want to do parks.
I get to parks, I'm sorry. We have a second position on the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Stephen Welsh to a four-year term for the Planning Commission to expire on December 31, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for this position?
President, a motion to reappoint Jack Garrett to serve on the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2022.
Second.
We have another motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, for our consideration is the nominations of Stephen Welsh and Jack Garrett. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Stephen Welsh.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Mr. Welsh.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Welsh.
Commissioner Cavender.
Stephen Welsh.
Commissioner Quinn.
Jack Garrett.
Commissioner Hart.
Jack Garrett.
Commissioner McCollum.
Jack Garrett.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Stephen Welsh.
Commissioner Holmes.
Stephen Welsh, thank you, Mr. Welsh, and thank you, Mr. Garrett, for your service on this board. Next for our consideration is the Parks and Recreation Board. We will be appointing someone to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for a five-year term set to expire on December 31, 2028. We will entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Jay Field to serve on the Parks and Rec Board for a five-year term to expire, to expire, expire on December 31, or 2028.
Second.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I motion to appoint Stephen Young to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for a five-year term to expire on December 31, 2028.
Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
A motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are closed. Our consideration for a position on the Park and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Board is Mr. Field or Mr. Young. So, Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondick.
Jay Field.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Mr. Young.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Young.
Commissioner Cavender.
Steve Young.
Commissioner Quinn.
Jay Field.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Young.
Commissioner McCollum.
Jay Field.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Steve Young.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Young, thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Field, for your candidacy. For our next consideration is the Ice Rink Advisory Board, a three-year term. We have three positions in the Ice Rink Advisory Board. All three are full three-year terms to expire on December 31, 2026. I will consider a motion.
Mr. President, a motion to appoint, to reappoint Jeremy Beha to serve on the Ice Rink Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2026.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for this position?
Motion to close.
Second. We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Before us, for our consideration, is Jeremy Beha for Ice Rink Advisory Board. Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondick.
Jeremy Beha.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Jeremy Beha.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, Mr. Beha. Thank you for your service and continuing to serve. We have another position to consider on the Ice Rink Advisory Board. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, a motion to reappoint Jason Bryn to serve on the Ice Rink Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for this position for the Advisory, Ice Rink Advisory Board?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, before us now, for our consideration, is the reappointment of Jason Bryn to the Ice Rink Skating, the Ice Rink Advisory Board. Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondick.
Jason Bryn.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Jason Bryn.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Bryn.
Commissioner McCollum.
Jason Bryn.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Jason Bryn.
Commissioner Holmes.
Jason Bryn, thank you, Mr. Bryn, for your service and for continuing to serve. Finally, we have a third position on the Ice Rink Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to, Mr. President, motion to appoint Adam Hayes to serve on the Ice Rink Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2026.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, before us, for our consideration, is the nomination of the appointment of Adam Hayes for the Ice Skating Rink Advisory Board.
Commissioner Gondick.
Sorry. Adam Hayes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Hayes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Adam Hayes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Hayes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Adam Hayes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Hayes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Adam Hayes. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Our next consideration is the Human Relations Commission. We have two positions, both three-year terms, set to expire on December 31, 2026. We will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint, reappoint Jen Kegarisi to serve on the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for this?
To appoint Melissa Hob to serve on the Human Relations Committee, Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, well, yeah, or 2026.
Second. Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? So for our consideration now is Melissa Hob's, Melissa Hob and/or Jen Kegarisi for the position. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Melissa Hob.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Jen Kegarisi.
Commissioner Trombetta, I'm sorry, Commissioner McCluskey.
Ms. Kegarisi.
Commissioner Cavender.
Jen Kegarisi.
Commissioner, Commissioner Quinn.
Ms. Hobbs.
Commissioner Hart.
Ms. Kegarisi.
Commissioner McCollum.
Melissa Hob.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Jen Kegarisi.
Commissioner Holmes.
Jen Kegarisi. Thank you, Ms. Kegarisi, for your previous service and your future service. We have another position for consideration in the Human Relations Commission. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to reappoint Andrew Ladon to the, serve on the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kay Dugery to the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
Motion.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close and a second. I'm not sure who did what, but we had a chorus of them. So for our consideration is a motion to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, for our consideration for the second position will be Andrew Ladon or Kay Dugery. I hope I'm saying that name correctly.
Yep.
So, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Kay Dugery.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Andrew Ladon.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Andrew Ladon.
Commissioner Cavender.
Andrew Ladon.
Commissioner Quinn.
Kay, Kay Do, Paul Dugery.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Ladon.
Commissioner McCollum.
Kay Dugery.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Ladon.
Commissioner Holmes.
Andrew Ladon, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ladon, for your service and your continued service. Next for our consideration is the Historical Commission. We have two spots on the Historical Commission. These are four-year terms. They are set to expire on December 31, 2027. We will consider a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Keith Swift to serve on the Historical Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations for this position?
I'd like to nominate Brian Ramone.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
For our consideration is the candidacy of Keith Swift or Brian Ramona for the Historical Commission, a position, four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Keith Swift.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Brian Ramona.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Swift.
Commissioner Cavender.
Keith Swift.
Commissioner Quinn.
Bri, Brian Ramona.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Swift.
Commissioner McCollum.
Brian Ramona.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Keith Swift.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Swift, thank you, Mr. Swift, for your service and for your consideration. We have a second position for Historical Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027. We will entertain a motion.
Nominate Brian Ramona.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any other nomination?
Mr. President, I would nominate Anthony Morinelli.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nomination? God bless you. Would someone like to move to close nominations?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, for our consideration is Mr. Ramona or Mr. Morinelli for the position. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Brian Ramo.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Mr. Morinelli.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Ramona.
Commissioner Cavender.
Brian Ramona.
Commissioner Quinn.
Brian, Brian Ramona.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Morinelli.
Commissioner McCollum.
Brian Ramona.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Brian Ramo.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Morinelli, thank you, Mr. Ramona, for your previous service and for agreeing to serve again. We now move to the Health Advisory Board.
President, I make a motion to appoint Dr. Katie Meckler. Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Dr. Katie Meckler to serve on the Health Advisory Board for a five-year term to expire on December 31, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for the Health Advisory Board?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, for our consideration is the candidacy of Katie Meckler, M.D., for the Health Advisory Board. Mr. Berman, we call the roll.
Commissioner Gondick.
Katie Meckler.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Dr. Meckler.
Commissioner Cavender.
Katie Meckler.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Dr. Meckler.
Commissioner McCollum.
Katie Meckler.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Dr. Meckler.
Commissioner Holmes.
Dr. Meckler. And finally, we have, for our consideration, a Civil Service Commission appointment. This is to appoint or reappoint someone to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term expiring December 31, 2029.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Ma Harris the Mel to serve this term.
Motion to table.
I move, second that.
We have a motion to table and a second. We, go ahead.
I believe we call the ta, table first, right?
No, she nominated.
But doesn't, but doesn't the ta, table supersede the?
So I think if there's a motion to table and a second, the motion to table needs